Okay, I would like to call the order of the Committee at the Hall for Tuesday, May 28th, 2019, let the record show that all aldermen are present. First on our agenda is PL 45-19 by Mayor Elio to authorize the mayor to sign an easement between the City of Olean and Nise.
This is just an easement for... This has to do with North 1st Street and Whitney Avenue for the new park. The gas line is going to be going in extended direction, moving over to the neighbors' property. And this is just giving National Fuel an easement to get in and out of that area. It doesn't affect any designs with the park or anything else. Bob started with you. I see no reason why you guys should not write easements.
National Fuel or Nise?
Whoever it is.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, can we get a sponsor? Sponsor motion made by Alderman Witt.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Doherty. All in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion's carried. We're forward to the tonight's regular meeting for resolution. Next on our agenda, we have a discussion item as far as transfers to capital funds. So today, I went and met with the mayor, as well as Fred, on a couple items, as this is the last meeting before the end of our fiscal year. Anything that we want to capture that's remaining in this year's budget, we need to set aside into specific capital funds tonight. So, three things that came to my mind, and if there's anything else, please, now's the time to talk about it. But first on the list was any remaining demolition monies. So there's $11,510 remaining in the 1819 budget. So to prevent that from just rolling over to the fund balance, I'd like to take that and roll it over into our capital account for demolition of properties as we continue moving forward on remedying blight. The second is the remaining monies, which is predominantly from the emergency cleanup side of the tree program, but there's about $10,000 remaining in this year's budget to... Now, I don't believe we have a specific tree capital fund, so Fred was going to create one for this purpose where we could take $10,000 and set that aside going into the new fiscal year. And then the last would be the animal control, $5,000 that was set aside for the track, neuter, and release, the cap program. Wasn't used this year, but we are expecting most likely we'll get used.
Yeah, it's just a building we won't leave until after the first of the year, so we'd like to move this money into a capital account so that we'll be able to use it for the program.
Any comments, questions?
I don't remember what line it was, but was there a line that we were going to take any leftover funds and move into the clean-up week for Olean?
We were going to... We had talked about doing that with the contingency. We put it in sidewalks instead, but our conversation was that we would take that out of the next budget's contingency if we needed to have this year.
Any other comments? Anything else that... I mean, this is kind of the last chance to do this, if I'm forgetting anything else that we've wanted to set aside, Bill. Can you think of anything else?
I think we're... I think with the resolutions signed tonight for contingency money, and this year, I think with... Brad, anything that you...
No. I do see the general point of zero. And I think these are all the things that we talked about during a bunch of times. Unless we get on the blackboard, there's something we can move from.
All right, very good. So that will be in the regular meeting for resolution tonight. So I'll make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second, please? Seconded by Alderman Witt. All in favor? Aye. Okay. So we are adjourned. Everybody good to go? Okay. Then we're going to jump in, and I would like to call the order of the regular meeting for the Olean Common Council for Tuesday, May 28th, 2019. Will the clerk please read the rule?
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Adriano.
Here.
Alderman Gonzalez.
Here.
Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman George.
Here. Please rise for the invocation.
Dear Lord, as we get up today at this meeting, we ask that you will be in our midst. Help us to make decisions that will be pleasing to you. Help us to be able to discuss matters at hand in a reasonable way and to be willing to give up having our own will. God, let this meeting be protect... Protect... As should be the case in all areas of our life. Help us keep you at the forefront of our mind as we do the work set before us. Bless this community and the people that reside in your name we ask.
The blood of the good, the stupid, the blind, the innocent, the veteran, and the true to our heart, the righteous fans, the one nation, our America, and the business of liberty and justice.
Reading, correcting, and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Olean Common Council was held on Tuesday, May 14th, 2019, at 6:35 PM. Present: Alderman Adriano, Alderman Gonzalez, Alderman Doherty, Alderman Smith, and Alderman George.
Can I get a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting? Motion made by Alderman Gonzalez.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Doherty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion's carried. Committee reports an unfinished council business.
Report from committee on the Hall on PL 27-19 to order the removal of structures located at 412-O-North 13th Street, City of Olean. Committee will come as approval, refer to city attorney for resolution.
Communications from the mayor.
Thank you, John. Two good pieces of information or things to report tonight. Those of you who have been driving on Buffalo Street, I hope you noticed that the construction fence has gone up for the new hotel, and some equipment has been moving in, and there's also, it looks like, some jager stakes out there. So it looks like that's on its way to be a reality here. And I just came from the Olean, a real softball game, they beat City Honors 1-0. Move on. Thursday night, we move on to Buffalo.
Great. Good news, Bill. Thank you. Miscellaneous communications?
We have none.
City official reports?
None.
Proposed legislation and reports?
PL 45-19 by Mayor Elio, referred to committee of the Hall Tuesday, May 28th, 2019, by council president. PL 46-19 by Mayor Elio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, May 28th, 2019, for resolution by council president. PL 47-19 by Alderman Adriano, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, June 11th, 2019, for resolution by council president. PL 48-19 by Alderman Adriano, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, May 28th, 2019, for resolution by council president.
Okay, so before we get into public comment, I would like to offer the opportunity for any of the council members to make a public statement at this time.
John.
Yes, Alderman Witt, please.
I would just like to thank the exchange fund. Phil and I were out walking and we saw the military banders up, and it's really, very dangerous downtown. And I have to tell you, we were walking, and I looked up, and I saw a banner for Dr. Cash. And I worked with him as a student nurse and as a nurse on OB, and he was one of the busiest OB folks here in Olean. So many people just loved him. So I just think it was a great idea, and I'd just like to thank the exchange fund.
Great. Anything else? Okay. At this time, can the clerk please read the public comment statement?
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their office.
Okay. At this time, I would like to offer it up to the public. To step over to the podium, please state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Linda Lindner, 1301 Room 2, and I'm here regarding the revision coming 719 on the removal of the rear residence at 412-North 13th Street. I have a concern, as we have talked in previous meetings, about community cats residing in my area, and this is one of the areas where they're residing. I would like to see that the spay program does come down there, track these animals, and remove them safely. Also, another concern is the safety of the people in the neighborhood, making sure that that is all done correctly. I know there has been an individual down there looking at it for the removal. My main concern right now is getting those animals safely out of there, and we have discussed the bond reliance for the track, neuter, vaccination program. And I had wanted to basically participate with the help of the tracking, and yet I heard nothing from anyone, and I just want to make a recommendation that I still am interested, and please someone get back to me. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. Anyone else?
Yeah, a couple of other things. Oh, okay, I have a couple things. I looked at this, you know, you transfer funds. My question is, is this just getting help? Spring cleanup, going from one fund to the other touches water. You know, you got $12,500 going from the water fund to the volunteer funds here. And I'm just wondering if that's why this is. At the end of fiscal year, you just have to clean those accounts and move the money around, or is this something that you just take it from the fund? And therefore, down the road, you're going to be short on money. Ready for water, though? Hey, the problem ahead there isn't much, it only needs a penny pound of prison bill. But it's still going to be just money out of your bill. That's just a question I have. Now, my next question is, what are the plans on that underpass on Front Street? The ones that the truck has, and we get stuck underneath it? If you wait for the railroad to pick it up, that's a very expensive proposition. You've got pad metal track there, pad metal track there. You can't take it up four or five feet. Is it possible to take up and leave it? Would there be problems with the water lines going underneath that you do not see permitted to that water sewage lines? Or would it just be a matter of remegaring it till you get the right measurement? Because through the years, you've had another edge, you've had an edge, or whatever. Is that a true measurement on that? This thing has been going on for over 50 years. I mean, I know there was a year ago when I worked at the garage, and we had our warehouse on the Kukel as their place. And it was... I mean, I'm going to get stuck, but we get stuck more and more and more. Don't you think there should be a warning or even a break out of that, out of the thing where people get to the... Just a proper measurement, yellow flashing lights, and at least these people could be aware. They just say that people are stupid, because some people really aren't that great, and they don't pay attention. People aren't stupid, they're not stupid, they just don't pay attention. But if you have something like that, say, hey, you got the flashing light, I'm not going to go there, especially coming from East State. East State was a hospital. That's where it all seems to happen. I mean, if they see the flashing light, and they haven't heard it a lot, then they can turn on and go the other way. I know it's not a truck route, and it's too young to be a truck route. So I'm just wondering, if you wait for the railroad to get me through out there. Case in point, Cary Avenue, the underpass there, couple years ago, they were going to make a washway, eliminate it, fix it. It never happened. I'm just asking what the plans were for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brockamue. I'll look into the most comments. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I would like to call the public comment section closed. Onto finance and bills.
The auditor has processed bills and claims against the City of Olean as per listed submitted to each alderman and will come in payment thereof. Whereas, the auditor has presented to the common council bills and claims against the City of Olean totaling $1.6 billion for the budget and will come in payment thereof. Now, therefore, be resolved that the same being all hereby audited and allowed, and the auditor has hereby authorized and directed to draw warrants for the payments thereof at the amounts set opposite each respective claim. You're going to respond for that.
All right. Any comments or questions on financial bills? All right, seeing none, could I get a sponsor, please? Which sponsor? Sponsored by Alderman George. Can I get a second? Seconded by Alderman Witt. Okay. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt.
Yes.
Alderman Adriano.
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Alderman Doherty.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman George.
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford.
Yes.
And motion carries 7-2-0.
All right, resolutions. At this time, before we jump in, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules. Could I get a second, please? Seconded by Alderman Adriano. All in favor? Aye. Now, I will make a motion to amend the agenda to include Resolution 48-19, as discussed previously in the Committee at the Hall. Could I get a second, please? Seconded by Alderman Adriano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 26-19, PL 27-19 by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Gonzalez. Resolution ordering removal of structures located at 412-O-North 13th Street North, City of Olean, tax map ID 94.056-2-3.
All right, so I believe this is the structure that sits kind of backways off of North 12th and North 13th Street. I'm sorry I wasn't here last week, so we received a bid for $23,000. Is that correct, though?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I guess one item, does anyone else at this time have a comment on this? Alderman Witt?
I do. I know we talked earlier, we had a list of houses we were looking at. So the $23,000, is that coming out of the money that we already set aside for those other homes, or is it... We're having bunk in mind, or is it just going to wait to see if we have $23,000 on there?
Well, this would be a new... My understanding, this would be a new authorization of demo, something that has not been planned for. Is that correct, Bill?
Yes.
Now, one comment that I would like to make, and I understand the... Certainly, Alderman Smith brought this before us, the urgency trying to get this structure down, it is unsafe. There are two properties that the county has given us going forward, 303 East Elm Street, as well as 1013 Washington Street, which are in deplorable condition, and we are also waiting to hear back from the county on a third property. So I guess going into this, I would like to get your feel, get your opinion, whether it would behoove the city. It seems that we get a better quote-unquote deal going out in bulk pricing if we tackle four properties this summer and see what maybe a bid would come back, if it would be beneficial, rather than spending $23,000 on... Quite frankly, it's a small property that is not... Well, no one even knows where it is. It's far from the road. I went by there and took a couple pictures of it today. You know, I guess I'm open to the discussion on this.
So, do we get bulk pricing? I think that's kind of a myth. We've been saying bulk pricing on these demos for years, and when it comes down to it, it never materializes, right? So we can sit and wish that, well, there's going to be a contractor that's going to come do it all for, you know, some, you know, Walmart price, and it's not going to happen. I just feel like my experience has been in this venue, that bulk pricing.
Well, I mean, okay, so in relation to that, my understanding going into the four structures that were taken down recently, individually, for example, the one property on North 7th Street, the 400 block, full of asbestos, we went and bid for four properties, didn't we, Bill, with the money that Cary set aside? And it came out, you know...
From the survey. The asbestos survey.
Wasn't it four properties for $100,000, essentially, four properties? Individually, each one of those were coming back at like $30,000 or $40,000 to demo. I mean, is that bringing about...
Yeah, it was pretty accurate. I went to the place, yes, we had the extra money, and we were able to take four properties down. I'm not sure if we had to use some of the... Of our demo money to... Gee, it was very...
I think we did use some of the demolition.
It wasn't very much. Probably pretty asbestos, maybe pretty asbestos, three words. It wasn't a lot of their money. But, you know, Paul, you're right. We looked at bulk, and I guess, rather than call it bulk, if we can get a contractor that's... That'll give us a price on the floor, and they know that they're going to get the floor, they'll give us a little better price. And there's some, you know, it depends on, you see, is it... It has to be taken down hot?
Right.
Or, and that's with asbestos or not, so we try to get the best price we can.
And I'm not trying to sound like I'm against the idea, like, obviously, if we could do that, that would be great. I just, I don't know, I wouldn't want it to track from the matter at hand.
No.
Hoping that we're going to, like, do something, you know, overreach.
I mean, just to... Just to... I mean, I know you guys are familiar. I'll ask Bill to provide me. These are the two structures that the county are giving us, on East Elm Street and on Washington Street. But Washington Street was a previous amount lab. You know, from my understanding, those houses are most... They're non-savable. And I think... I don't know, again, this is... The purpose of this, and I'm sorry I wasn't here last week when this was discussed in committee, is to just have this discussion and say, you know, is this mission critical? Or does it benefit us to just... To wait until we receive the deeds or titles from these structures and we go out some point this summer or in the fall with a plan to do three or four properties?
Do you mind if I make a comment, John?
Absolutely. Nate?
A couple thoughts on this. I appreciate Lynn and Paul moving this to resolution when I was absent last week. Thank you. I think what Paul's saying, there's some truth to that. It can go both ways. In my experience seeing this, once in a while, we've got a better deal with multiple properties. However, the other side of that is I've seen us, the city, wait years, waiting for better deals, and houses have sat there, sat there, sat there, when we think we're going to get a better deal. So, you know, no one has a crystal ball. We don't know the future. But I do know from past experience that, in general, it's better just to take them and knock them down when we're able to. My other thought is, now that it's been declared unsafe, and this would be a question for Nick or the fire chief, can it be delayed? Because it says it's been immediately directed to cause a structure under premises to be immediately demolished, so I don't know if we have the ability to wait. And you guys, Nick or Chief, do you have any answer to that? Can it be delayed, or does it immediately, with most... Whatever expediency available, come down?
Legally, it can be delayed. There's nothing that's preventing the council from putting a resolution to delay it. But you need to be aware that you are on notice now by virtue of yourselves having put it on notice as a dangerous building, and if somebody were to get injured there, there would create a potential liability to the city, the city knowing that the property was dangerous and then chose not to act on it.
Nick, is that the same situation for any of the properties that are sitting around town with a red X on it?
No, the fire chief has not declared that those are a public hazard. Now, that's what differentiates those properties from properties... There was this one, there were other couple ones that you already acted on. When you make that... The fire chief makes that recommendation raises that level of seriousness on what potentially could cause problems with that property.
Okay.
John, we moved this to Committee of... To the regular meeting this week because you guys weren't there, but also, we did not have a formal number when we left our discussion last time either. So just to bring that up. And then the other thing is, I'm going to kind of side with Nate and Paul on this because we got those 11, 13 houses, and we sat on trying to send them out to bulk pricing. And we sat, what, two, almost three years, trying to get them... Get numbers in, and it didn't save us one way or the other. And it's one of those things, it's like any house in the city, if they're... If they're worth... Some of them are worth saving, it's just you've got to find the person or the want to do it, right? Like an old car trying to be restored. If you have no one that can fix it, it's just going to sit there rot and then go to the scrapyard. Very similar to this stuff. And like Nate said, the opportunity presents itself. Let it go down.
Okay. One more question. Do we know what the turnaround will be on the county properties? How quickly will be in possession?
No, because it's in the process now.
Okay. So it could be a bit. It could be. Sure. Okay.
Could I just ask, what amount do you have in that line as of now?
Well, as of now, I mean, this would probably hit, or take effect in next year's budget, is that? So as of now, we're... I don't know, in the capital fund, how much is in the capital fund? Because we're moving some into it, it's $11,000, but...
You would have about $40,000 in capital, around $177. And with 1920 budget, I believe it's $55,000. We'll have close to $100,000 in 1920.
And then that includes the down line for the fire department? Or is that separate?
It is separate. They have their own... They have an emergency line.
Yes, that's the capital account. It'll have $40,000. So we could take... We could take $23,720 out of that capital account, $177, if we chose to.
But if, as was pointed out, that this is a dangerous property, why wouldn't you take it out of the fire department?
Your call.
Okay. I mean, listen, I'm all on board with taking down these structures, by all means. I just wanted to have this conversation, since all of us haven't been together to have it. So, you know, I wanted to get the feel, really, of what the... Where the rest of you stand. So if everyone is on board with moving forward on this, then you have my full support. Okay? All right, seeing nothing else? We good? Okay. Okay, so moving forward then. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Would you like to... Resolution 26-19. Yeah, all right, so you already wrote the title, so we're good to go, right? So will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt. Alderman Adriano. Alderman Gonzalez. Alderman Doherty.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman George.
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-2-0. Resolution 45-19, PL 45-19, by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Doherty, to authorize the mayor to sign an easement between the City of Olean and Nise.
All right, discussed previously in Committee at the Hall. Comments or questions? Seeing nothing, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt.
Yes.
Alderman Adriano.
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Alderman Doherty.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman George.
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-2-0. Resolution 46-19, PL 46-19, by Alderman Crawford, seconded by Alderman Doherty. Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from general funds... Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from general fund contingency to, uh, to various line items.
All right, um, kind of coming out of our plan that we created during the budget, and now just, uh, transferring those funds, uh, into the line items, the capital funds. Any comments or questions on these? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Adriano?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman Dory?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman George?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries seven two zero. Resolution forty-seven dash nineteen, P L forty-eight dash nineteen, to authorize the removal of, of the tree located at one zero five, one five Seneca Street by the property owner, with the condition that the property owner also repair or replace the sidewalk above the tree.
Okay, so it's come to my attention that we need to, uh, postpone this. I will make a motion to postpone, could I get a second, please?
A second.
Seconded by Alderman Adriano, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, all right, we will postpone that, uh, and Bill, next, regular meeting. I'm sorry. Yes. Um, all right, so, resolution forty-eight dash nineteen, uh, this is what we talked about, uh, authorizing the transfer of the funds from the remaining budget into, uh, three specific capital items. I'll go ahead and, uh, sponsor, please, could I get a second? Seconded by Alderman Witt. Will the clerk, I'm sorry, uh, any comments or questions before we vote? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Adriano?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman Dory?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman George?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries seven two zero.
Anything before we adjourn? Seeing nothing, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Seconded by Alderman Adriano, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we are adjourned.